Chief, Tom, come up.
Good evening, everybody. Police Department for the month of June. We had two hundred and ninety-five calls for service. Bring us up to eighteen hundred and twenty-four a year. The number of arrests we had five in the month of June. Bring us up to twenty-three. Customers would be helping sell one. Bring us up to fourteen for the year. Citations issued, ever seventeen traffic citations issued. Bring us up to eighty-eight. Non-traffic, two. In the month of June, it was seventeen. Parking citations, eighty-two. We have seven hundred and seventy-eight. Total citations, one hundred and one. Bring us up to five hundred and eighty-six. Traffic points, thirteen. In the month of June, bring us up to fifty-nine. Parking tickets issued, one hundred and fifty. Bring us up to eighty-one. Parking tickets, eight sixty. Bring us up to two hundred and ninety-eight.
It's good evening. Fire report for June twenty twenty-five, or thirty-seven calls for the month. Fire department was in service eleven hours and seven minutes. There were thirty-two hours and thirty-seven minutes of total staff time. And people with fire fighters were fine on the seventh. Want to say some thanks out. The first is the project manager at the Jehovah's Witness construction site. They were nice enough to let us use both of the buildings on that site before they demolished them for training. So that gave us the ability to do live training, go in, cut holes, do whatever. And we had several of the local fire companies from Grant here also had the ability to benefit from that. So thank you to them for that. July fifth, lots of help. Millmont Fire Company, Prospect Fire Company, and Township were nice enough to come out for the parade. We had two privately owned fire trucks there too, so that was kind of nice. It's probably the largest group of ever asked we've had. And then, you know, everybody at the club on the fireworks night. So all the companies I already mentioned, plus Holmes Fire Company, A.S.O. Fire Company, Woodland Fire Company were there as well. County ninety-one-one center had folks out to help us, fire police, the police department. Big group effort to make it all happen. So without them, we couldn't do it. So we just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of, you know, everything that the other towns are doing for us. And then last, our home zone was out again with the balloons, so that's always a good thing. Sadly, the home zone will be disbanded sometime this year. So the fire company will probably take that move. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking of important people alive, so we're in on it. Did have a meeting with all our services and coordinated with Level One Center. They set up and utilized mobile units. We had cameras, all sorts of stuff to make sure that the event is safe and everything is covered. And we had EMS won't stand by and, you know, thank you for the fire police because I think they were our unsung heroes that stayed pretty much the whole time and dealt with traffic and people play. They won't be back in a short. But that is it. Board Health and Met last month, their last meeting during the summer hiatus. They will return in September. Nice quick meeting. Civil Service did not meet and we will be making a wish to hire three part-time officers today. And that's one report.
Thank you. For the questions, do I have most of the separate public speaker board?
Mr. Vice President.
Second.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All of the favorites say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have. All right, moving on, the management report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The fireworks in the city, wow. What a spectacular firework display. The entire day was absolutely amazing. From the morning parade to the evening celebration. The weather was a bit more, but didn't seem to slow anyone down. Our residents showed up and enjoyed the day. I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge and thank the many people that were present behind the scenes to make the day such success. A heartfelt thank you from me to the highway department, the police department, the fire department, public safety, counselors Melissa Boyce, Rich Gere, Dane Collins, Katie Wolverton, our relief park librarian. A special shout out and thank you to Danielle Dunne who was our tent who kind of jumped in and helped whatever we needed her to do. And of course, Rich Gere's daughter Olivia who also volunteered her time. It was truly a team effort and I'm incredibly grateful to each and everyone of those who did help and participate. It's been mentioned earlier that we did a walk-through, a library walk-through today with Councilor Dane Collins, engineer Charles Catania, the library director Katie Wolverton, and myself. Ended up the walk-through of the Village Park Library to assess the temporary water issues that arise during bad weather. The engineer will be identifying priority repairs and once he receives his recommendations will determine the next steps moving forward with necessary improvements. Town, our town clock update. I also met today with engineer Charles Catania, our electrical contractor and our concrete contractor to assess the town clock in the business district. We determined the clock was leaning due to compromised foundation. The clock has been temporarily removed so the foundation can be repaired, which will begin tomorrow. Once the foundation has cured, the clock will be reinstalled, which we're only hoping will be two days.
Who did that call?
Oh, myself.
The next thing I want to report about is an Aqua water project starting July twenty-first. It's part of Aqua's twenty twenty-five main replacement project. They'll begin work on Hillside Road, Glen Rock Road, West Ridley Avenue, and Trainers Street starting July first. Please be mindful of construction in these areas and plan accordingly. And on a personal note and also a joyful note, we are thrilled to share that Danielle's at home who is currently on maternity, has welcomed a beautiful baby girl. Both mom and baby are doing well. Congratulations to Danielle and her family.
That baby is gorgeous.
Yeah. That is all I ask.
Thank you very much.
Next up is our official report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President. Bernie and I met earlier this week, tributed the Rose File and I'm happy to report that there are no legal matters that will require the plans of extension this evening. Well done.
Thanks, sir. Next, we have the engineers' report.
Thank you, Councilor Eric. Copy my reports on file. Couple things I do want to mention is the first is the Rosemont Avenue sanitary sewer phase two project. It's a community development block grant that the borough received from the county. Bids were received by a PENDO and online bidding platform. We received six bids and I want to read those bids into the record. Low bidder was Anadisio Contractors at one hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. Agar Jolyn Sun Incorporated for one hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. Eagle Contracting and Landscape Incorporated, two hundred and one thousand, one hundred dollars. JMC Contractors, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. Juric Incorporated, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and one dollars. And More Construction, four hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. There is an action item later in the agenda to award the contractor, the low bidder, Anadisio Contractors. The other action item I want to mention is that it's kind of part of A.S.O.'s Avenue Bridge project. So part of that utility relocation, the borough is required to relocate or replace a section of the sanitary sewer on Hinckley Avenue and Sellers Avenue. And that will be reimbursed by PENDO for a portion of the public cost. And I need the motion to authorize advertising for that project. That's another action item. And that's all I have.
Say, even if it's not on you.
Oh, yes, last question.
Oh, no, my apologies. My apologies. Thank you, Mr. Hitac. All right, next up is going to be council business. Any member of council have anything that they would like to discuss? Put it in the forum, as we all know. And we will start with the councilor.
I don't have any questions.
But, okay. I am good.
Nothing for me?
All right, we're going to close council business. And now we're going to move to public comment. This is a portion of the meeting where anyone member of public can come to the podium. You have five minutes to your act, council. Please just state your name and your address for the record. And that is over.
Beautiful picture of you and Danielle.
Oh.
Beautiful picture.
Thank you.
Congratulations to our members.
How much have we received from the Narnia colony so far?
Can I just have you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Name, I know who you are, but just.
Mike Dockery, three fifteen, Burke Avenue.
Thank you. Okay. Got that, good. And then I'm going to turn it to.
Mike Dockery, three fifteen, Burke Avenue.
I'm not taking it very top, sorry. Sorry about that. And I'm going to turn that question over to Chris.
I can add a couple of things.
Is there a ballpark for it? Can I help you out a little bit? Any questions?
Quarter two. Excuse me, quarter two just emailed. The first quarter was a little over four hundred thousand.
Okay, that's enough.
Okay.
Reason I'm asking is because it's four hundred thousand dollars. And I can't believe in three-plus years we have not come up with anything to make the sound system better here. Can't believe it. It's not, it's not a disgrace. We cannot hear that. Couldn't hear half of what people are saying. It's a disgrace. If it costs twenty-five thousand dollars, the reason for the income tax was to do things that are needed in the borough. This has been needed for over three years.
Mike, when I interviewed there, I actually did speak to video sound. I'm trying to get some prices from him just to see where we are looking at.
Okay, the car. Well, yeah, I just did a job with this contract and heard that.
They're heard good company, yeah. Well, you have to spend money to make money. And we haven't done that for a long time. It's funny because you mentioned the clock. I've driven by a clock for the last two or three weeks and I'm at the neighborhood. You see the clock leaning? And it's like, no, yeah, it's leaning, I can see it. And now here we know the reasons. Is there any way because some of the money that you have there on sprucing up downtown area, especially around the lot of flowers and stuff like that?
I don't see why that, I don't see why that would be an issue.
It's what we haven't done.
Yeah, once, once the, once the foundation is rectified, I don't see why that's an issue.
Well, the foundation is all cement.
Well, that's why you can put, I mean, they have wooden boxes with flowers in it, you know. Go to Home Depot and say, hey, don't matter, because everybody here buys from Home Depot. That's how it works. The stop signs, I've been running that up for how many years? One of my neighbors, I've seen it. Another day, did you see that car go up the street about twenty minutes ago? Had to be doing sixty, sixty-five miles an hour. And I don't know what we're waiting for. Either some kids get killed or some car backing out could get hit. I don't know what we're waiting for. We need stop signs on Burke Avenue. I was driving through SWAT court today, they have stop signs at every corner. Doesn't mean people stop them, but the stop signs are there at least slow them up. And we've been spinning wheels over this issue for how many years? And I know you guys can have looked at it, but nothing's been done. And do we have the time, people, on that? And the firm has the time to make that happen because the kids are on the street. Everybody's talking about kids baseball, all that stuff. Kids are on the street. It's going to happen. I, you know, and, you know, people say to me, why don't you bring it up? I brought it up all the time, all the time, and nothing gets done.
That's a really hard, we can get that moving pretty quick, really. I, you, you have brought that up quite a few times. And we did go out, we did take a look.
Yes, we did.
And that's something that is easy enough to get, you know, from your phone, right?
Okay.
Okay. I mean, give me two, give me two months. Because I don't know how, like, we, we have, there's a process that we have to go through. So we have to, you know, let everybody know.
So we haven't done that process yet.
Correct, we haven't done that yet.
See, that's the stuff, that's the stuff that bothers me that you bring stuff up. You know, I know you guys got a lot to do later, but, you know, and then it falls through the communication stuff, the stop signs, speeding, all that stuff, and then nothing gets done. And, you know, the money that we have coming in, there should be a lot of things to make the place a little better, nothing else.
I mean, I think with stop signs, we have to make sure that we're by law allowed in certain locations. It has to be a void stop. I believe if I'm correct, like, though.
Yes, we're going to enforce it in that in order.
Yeah, and we have to pass it ordinance as well.
We'll, we'll start now. Do you have that for me? And we will start now. And I'll work with the borough manager, the municipal public safety.
I don't think that is going to be hard.
It's not very hard.
It's not.
It's, yeah, this legally is fairly easy for us to track up if you're in one house. We'll, we'll put down our agenda and do it to a physical level. If we got, we'll get it done.
The only thing, of course, is prevent old, do a physical lot more.
No.
You know, well, I know it's funny because before you came over here, when I drove, I said to Sam, let's take a ride. Down by the lake, we left by where the clock used to be, and so we got the clock tomorrow. And went over to Manhole Company. One of your times with, oh, what's the problem with it? This companion, what's the problem with that Manhole Company?
How's your contact?
What's the answer?
They don't.
They, they, they take our information and that's, that's what we're doing. I mean, that one little manhole is probably not on their high priorities, even though it's a progress for the park. But there's probably other things that they are even much more serious than that. I agree with you that it should be intended to, but I don't know if it's just because when they greased the road, it just got higher and higher, so that's more of an incline, but the manhole's still unstable or fixed.
Well, that's, you know, that's the problem with roads and people, people pay them. You give it to the lowest contractor and they don't want to move manholes up. They just want to put a thin layer of the top.
That would be a handout. So that doesn't change the issue. We didn't, we didn't award that one BM. All we did was report it to them and we're at their mercy. We'll keep reporting it, but we can't get it out.
All right, thanks very much.
You got it, thank you.
Same test, three test, two Burke Avenue. Took me about a year and a half to get a speed code. I should you know that. So now we're trying to prevent kids from getting hit with a car because of the speed that these cars are coming down the street. Now, when the police come down the street, which we appreciate, there's nobody on the street. Because Mike and I, and my husband and I, and his wife, we sit on our porches every night. And we put up with this. I'm not blaming the, the police because they don't know when this happens. It happens, you know, all the time. We can't have them every year all the time. And it, it, I don't know if you, people don't understand because you don't see it. But, you know, if it's fifty-five, sixty, seventy miles an hour, it's ridiculous. They go right through the speeds at the stop signs. They don't stop. They come out of the, the street of the cul-de-sac. There's a stop sign there. They come right through, they don't care. There's something really has to be done. The other thing was the last meeting, I asked you guys to cut down the branches in front of the tree that says children.
Or here.
Whatever it says. I just haven't done that yet. I mean, that's just getting care of shears and just cutting off.
Where, where was it on here?
Hinckley.
On Hinckley Avenue?
Uh huh.
Got it, but I think it's a residential property. It might be their responsibility to cut it. So we're going to try and reach out to them and see if they take care of it. It might be in a situation we have that code deal or whatever, but we, 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 the borough can't just go on somebody's property and cut things down.
I don't think they have property on that one side.
No.
It's a tree, a house, and it doesn't, you can have rest or anything on the one side of it. It just looks like a big deep hole. And we, there's a tree between the sidewalk and.
I'll look at it right after we leave this meeting tonight.
There's no sidewalk there. There's no sidewalk.
We'll, we'll look into it and we'll get it taken care of.
Hinckley and, uh, Hinckson and Hinck, Hinckson and Hinckley? For like turning out, if I, if I hold a sec. This is the latest house. Uh, going down or going up? Going this way. Down. Down. Yeah. On the left or the right side? Right. Okay, done.
Good evening, everyone. Blake Hill, fifty-one Collie Chapel. Very status on the twenty twenty-two watch report.
Not at this time.
What's that?
Not at this time.
Not at this time, okay. And know in advanced life support services that are provided by the closure. I think that ends at the end of this month. There was talk that we were going to, I guess, get with other municipalities and come up with a plan. Is there anything you can share with us, what the cost of that is for maybe?
So the cost is not mine, Mike. There are six municipalities that we are working together with to try to figure that out. And final proposals should be in within the next week or so. And then we'll know, like, kind of have knowledge of what, you know, what it's going to be. We were ahead of the game, you know, by probably about like a month or two, getting it going. But, you know, a bunch of folks put in, you know, and then we want to make sure that we're getting what we're looking for. So we have a couple of, you know, different subject matter experts that are on those forums as well, which help us out. You got us in the right direction, so we're, we're getting, we're getting out of that. So we'll be out.
Okay, very good, thank you. Engineer mentioned that we're moving the, I guess, the sanitary sewer on Hinckley for the Sellers Avenue Bridge project. Mentioned that PENDO is, is they going to reimburse the borough for the full cost or a percentage of the cost?
I believe it's yeah.
It's what?
So Charles, you have to up to, it's fifty to seventy-five percent.
Fifty to seventy-five percent?
I mean, on the class.
That's okay, thank you. A question on action items. There's an action item tonight to adopt the resolution under twenty twenty-five oh seven, authorizing issuance by the borough of small burning under the Local Government Unit Debt Act in the principal amount of eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars under the project as described in the resolution. What is the project?
It's a utility relocation.
Utility relocation?
Yeah.
For the bridge.
Oh, and that's for the bridge, yeah. Oh, okay. So that's, we're taking out a loan for, for that and we're going to get reimbursed fifty to seventy-five percent back?
Well, we have, we have to put fifty, yes, we have to put the whole, the whole amount up first and we'll be reimbursed by fifty percent.
Okay. Okay. That loan, um, there are some, I guess, uh, what are the terms of it? You had it in front of you, right? But what is the, the, I was just curious what the interest rate is? And what the term of it is? Is it five years?
I believe it's four percent to two.
Four percent to two.
Four point seven eight, like, I can't remember if something had like.
Okay. Around four percent and for how many years?
I believe two years.
Two years, okay. Is it? Can I expect that probably we would get somewhat reimbursed prior to the two years?
Yeah.
And, and that's all related to the Sellers Avenue project, right? Okay. Um, okay, so like that, thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. Andrew from. Four nineteen, Paul Wall Street. Uh, so first of all, uh, the TV project, it seems to have been out for a couple of months. Comcast, Verizon, NBCN, are any of them working? I guess not if we don't have any microphones here.
Something's not working with the system that's set up here. That's really laying back to its Telview possibly. There might be an issue with Telview with our, with the borough.
So a call was made Comcast, well.
I spoke to Telview, I had, um, I was on a meeting with Telview for quite some time. They tried to do a bulletin post and that is not showing up, so that's why I have a call on Comcast.
I see, and how does Telview, the?
Telview is our, um, like, if you want to do a bulletin and you want to have pictures kind of spread, um, kind of displayed over the channel and, um, the live telecast, that's not really Telview. Telview is more of the, the weather, the bulletins, and upcoming events.
I see. And so you called Comcast and?
I'm waiting for them to get back. They're looking into it.
I see, okay. Very good, great to have some progress made so that residents outside of the, the people here on, you know, that attend the meetings could see what's going on, I'm sure it's important to them. Back to the audit, the twenty twenty-four audit, a second. So now, the twenty twenty-three audit, I just was looking at it recently, and that was completed in January. Now, by law, and I hate to throw in state law, you know, but it requires the audit to be finished at the end of March. So it seems like the auditor is, you know, taking a leisurely approach to completing this thing. And they were really only delayed by, and it's the same auditors that did it last year. So there's no excuse as far as, you know, startup time or, or whatever, as there was the previous year. So now we're in the middle of July and we don't even have a timetable or a deadline of what they're shooting for. So this seems like, it really seems like nobody cares.
Fire department.
I agree that the audit should be done ASAP and there are those rules and regulations. I'm not, you know, in tune with what the audit's going on with. There's not, no progress, no news.
No. That's all, down. We're trying to transition over to QuickBooks. I mean, we are, we're in the process of transitioning over to QuickBooks to start the audit.
Now, this is an audit for last year, you know, twenty twenty-four. So how would, you know, a transition now to QuickBooks impact that? Or how, you know, why should it impact that?
Well, because there's no progress, that's all I'm saying.
Pardon?
There's no progress on the audit at this time.
Okay, can you give us, give us some time?
I don't think we have appropriate answer right now. I want to pull anything out of the air. Just to give you an answer, I'm sure Chris is thinking the same way. Give you something that's actually accurate.
So, so you think by next month you'll have more concrete information?
You have some mail addresses.
Not to mention, that's thirty days that they could be working on it. So it wouldn't seem appropriate just to come back thirty days from now with, you know, pushing a deadline out three more months.
I would, I would agree. So, so give us, give us a day or two. Pardon? Give us a day or two. And we identify that where it is and relay the information to you.
Okay, that would be great. Uh, the EIT, you know, the receipts. Mr. Pinto, you started to say, you know, what the receipts were for the second quarter. Mr. Dockery was satisfied with the first quarter. I was wondering if you knew it in the middle.
I don't have the second quarter.
Uh, could we have that for the next meeting, a month from now? For the June thirtieth figures? And then lastly, so then lastly, the Rosemont Avenue Bridge, phase, not the bridge, the sewer project, phase two. Is that going to be covered one hundred percent by the county with the block rent? Okay. And I think that's all my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We got a lot of homework to do.
We got the notes, Steve.
I have.
All right, we're going to close the public comment now. And we're going to. Alright, we're going to close the public comment now, and we're going to move on to our action items. Evening. Uh, first one is motion to approve May accounts payable in the amount of five hundred sixty-nine thousand six hundred twenty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. Whoever maker the motion? Motion paid by Councilor Pinto, go ahead, second.
Second.
Second by Councilor Collins, any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, motion to approve June seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, council meeting minutes. Motion by Councilor Collins, go ahead, second.
Second.
Second by Councilor McGinnley, comments or questions?
I got it.
Go ahead.
Um, I reviewed my notes. Um, one, it states Cindy S., three seventeen Bertha, she's Cindy Hess. So, it's got the incorrect name on it. And there was also public comment from Mike Gale and Amy Furman to this office.
Okay, um, well, we could amend and, and, um, move to. Slitter, move next month, move to.
You, you could move to, to, to table this one for amendment, and then we can deal with it. Except for the, huh?
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion by, because Collins, second by Councilor Pinto, any comments or questions on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The ayes have it. Alright, motion to approve block party request for seven twenty-one Taster Avenue. Whoever maker the motion? Councilor McGinnley, second?
Second.
Councilor Case?
Hmm.
Alright, comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash zero seven, authorizing issuance by the borough of a small borrowing under the Local Government Unit Debt Act in the principal amount of eighty-two thousand nine hundred fifty dollars under the project as described in the resolution. Whoever maker the motion?
Maker.
Whoever maker the motion, Councilor McGinnley, go ahead, second.
Second.
Second, Councilor Pinto, comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, motion to approve block party request for Victorian Fair, scheduled for September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
Motion.
Whoever maker the motion is Councilor Collins, go ahead, second.
Second.
Second, Councilor DeLassio, any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, motion to approve to hire three part-time police officers at twenty-six dollars a minute. Whoever maker the motion is Councilor DeLassio, go ahead, second.
Second.
Second. Councilor Collins, comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to approve Rosemont Avenue Sanitary Sewer Phase Two project to end Abidazio contractors in the low bid amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand seven hundred and five dollars. Whoever maker the motion? Whoever maker the motion is Councilor McGinnley, go ahead, second.
Second.
Second, Councilor Pinto, comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, motion to authorize advertising of bids for Hinckley Avenue Sanitary Sewer relocation? Whoever maker the motion? Councilor McGinnley is the maker, go ahead, second.
Second.
Second, Councilor Pinto, any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn, Councilor Pinto, go ahead, second.